Welcome everyone to a regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, October 6, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, update on traffic signals in Hollow Tree Ridge, is that coming today?
He was going to.
He'll be around yet. That's not it. Let me go get him.
Well, while we're waiting, could I have a motion to move up the first selectman's report above the presentations? Sarah Moose, Mike Seconds, are in favor? Okay. So, first selectman's report, since we just had our meeting last week, and it's this week, since next Monday's a holiday, I don't have too much report, come on in it. Just a couple of things, I did a ribbon cutting last Friday over at PVOL, which is a new women's physical fitness business in the Heights Crossing development. It's a lot of fun to see those things come together, and congratulations to those folks, they're one of the first tenants over there, and it's great to just have a new business and really a special place, which is great. I don't know if anybody had a chance to go to the Chamber of Commerce Oktoberfest this past weekend, which also was a ton of fun, over at the Garden Center, a huge turnout, even bigger than last year, and I got out with a ridiculous hat, and unfortunately, people took pictures of me with that, so.
That's one of those, it is on the record, guilty as charged, but if you haven't been
to the Chamber's Oktoberfest thing, it's a ton of fun and highly recommended. That is all I have for my report today. Any questions for me? Okay, we'll get back to our regular presentation. Mr. Gentile?
Apologizing.
No worries.
You guys start a little early with that.
It's okay.
Oh, it's good. So, Ed is joining us from Director of Public Works. Update on traffic signals and paving in the area of Hollow Tree Ridge and Heights Road. Ed.
Ed Gentile, Director of Public Works for the town of Darien, and just to give you a little brief update, as of right now, or as of July 8, the traffic signals, the three along Hollow Tree Ridge Road, along the railroad crossing Heights Road and West Avenue, because they're all synchronized from one box, were completed on July 8. Startup was done, programming complete, so what we've been doing lately is we had to do the striping out there on Heights Road, so that we can actually test out the left turn lane and so on from Heights Road. And we currently have, our signal vendor had done the timing implementation and the camera setups, the cameras control the changing of the lights. I'm having him come back and take a look to make sure everything's working without problems. I have gotten a couple complaints about timing in the area of the railroad station and the cycling taking a little bit longer. As they did the original design for that, there was shown that there was an opportunity needed to clear some of the vehicles on Hollow Tree Ridge Road, so some of the timing is probably different than what people are used to. I did go out there tonight at around 6:15, 6:20, and took a look at what happens when the trains, and we do have a lot of people that get out and want to leave that station in a hurry. I could see that it was backed up all the way to the pedestrian overpass. So, I'll have them come down and take a look at the timing, make sure it's been implemented properly, and also have the signal engineer coming down to take a look, making sure that the program and the design actually sync up also, so. Just want to make sure it's going right. I did wait about a month into the school season, we're in October 1st now, just to get people used to the lights, or just to get the lights used to the people, and see what problems, if any, we came up with. So, we do have some issues out there with timing, and we'll see if we can correct them. As far as the paving goes, we did have some issues with settlement in some of the trenches that were out there, so I made the decision to pull the Heights Road and Hollow Tree off the paving list for this year. What will happen if I don't let those roads settle, I'll get reflective cracking in those trenches, and you'll see them as you drive up. So, that decision now to push it to July, August of next year, it's on the list to be done. I did have the gas company and the developer address their trenches that are out there now, I had them actually mill them out and repave them again, so that I could actually pave the road on Heights Road. So, that's where we stand right now. We do have a new development going and moving forward at the corner of Edgerton and Heights Road, same developer that did the Palmer's area. I will work with them as they take the buildings down and their plans come in, to see if I can get them off of the roads that I need to pave before I pave them next year. Stopping in utilities, making sure drainage is tied in, sanitary sewer lattes, whatever they may need, we'll see if we can get that done before I pave. Any questions?
You said that the traffic was backed up, was that backed up in the Heights parking lot or backed up on Heights Road?
Correct, it went down the ramp, not on Hollow Tree, down the ramp and as you face it down, it'd be left to the pedestrian, as you come up, as you circle out.
Got it.
Is that less the traffic and more the fact that it's too hard to put in a left turn lane, because we've had inquiries about that, and it's, the physics don't work over there?
I don't know if the left turn lane will solve all the problems over there. I did look at doing it, I'd love to put a left turn lane in, I have two problems, and they both look like masked arms, one on each corner, so moving them requires going down about 10 to 15 feet in the ground with a six-foot diameter concrete post to mount this on, to move them in any way, shape, or form. It was, I just don't have enough room out there, I would have, I would have put that left turn lane in.
Okay. Very helpful, questions for Ed? Sarah?
So, okay, a couple of things I've noticed, while walking towards Heights Road from Hollow Tree, I've noticed that the timing is odd occasionally, and I'm curious if it's something that's been being calibrated. There was a cycle where the light turned red at the train station, so traffic stopped and about 20 seconds later turned green again, and the light never turned green for the train station or the old Avalon Beverly now, which was odd, and it was like a momentary stop, and then it went again, but I didn't know if that was because it was maybe you're trying to move it along in a different place. I think in the morning, particularly, you want to move Hollow Tree as much as you can, and there was not a ton of traffic, so that's good. I don't know if it's on an eye now, is it an eye or no, does it use an electric eye?
Those cameras are video detection cameras, they know if you pull up to the stop bar instead of the pressure sensors that used to be in the road.
Yeah.
There are a couple of things that impact timing on lights, right? If there's no one at the intersection, it'll cycle through quicker.
Maybe that's why.
It won't turn the lights on.
That's a good thing.
Why waste that timing there?
Hundred percent, yeah.
The other thing is that we have those emergency preemptors on them. If an emergency vehicle does go through that, the cycle has to like two or three times through before it resets itself also.
Interesting, okay.
So, those are all things that play, and not just one light, I have three of them working together.
Right, right, right.
So, they all have to get back into sync again. Worst thing in the world is to have an emergency vehicle go through there around 8:30, 9 o'clock, when middle school's there.
Yeah.
Because those lights, they just, they just can't handle the volume right now that goes through there.
So, the other question I have, if you're not going to pave Heights or Hollow Tree, are you not going to put the left lane on Heights?
It's there right now.
But is there enough room for both?
It's there right now.
Okay.
I drove through it today, I drove through it last week also, to see how it felt.
Okay.
Plenty of room.
There's plenty of room, okay. Okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Mike?
I have similar observations about the timing. In addition, the right-hand turn lane when you're on Heights, turning right onto Hollow Tree, there's the arrow, and there have been times where I've been the third or fourth car, so there's traffic there, and that right turn light flips off after about like three seconds, like not even the first car can almost get through the, you know, the green side light there. So, I'm happy to hear that you'll check the timing, and I thought, maybe I'm not remembering this correctly, but I thought there was going to be a widening of Hollow Tree.
There was, actually, they took about five feet out of that corner, as far back as they could, to the light pole that was there, traffic pole, light pole that hangs the span of the lighting, but they did move it enough so they could get two lanes in that direction, westbound, and one coming in. We also pulled the stop bar back too for the turning radiuses of the buses that come through there.
Okay.
Other questions? Ed, thank you, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Board Liaison Report, Sarah?
I have no new reports from our meeting, we had it last week or the week before. We have our Henley Homes Royal Building Committee meeting next on the October 15th, and no new meetings or information for the third meeting during.
Okay, Monica?
Sticking with transportation and construction, just an update on 23A, the walls, there are three walls out there, they're about 25% completed. Drainage is expected to go in in the next couple of weeks as designed, and the paving is on schedule for mid-December, so at least the first layer. I'm learning a lot about paving, so there could be two layers, right Ed? Yeah. And so, we'll have the first layer down mid-December, so we'll be able to have car traffic through there. That's it.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Marcy?
No new updates on mental health services last week, so.
Mike?
Light review has not met since our last meeting, but we do meet this Wednesday.
Okay, terrific. All right, next up, public comments, any comments online?
No, we did not receive any.
Okay. Kate?
Yeah, do I stand here?
Yes, up at the microphone.
Or is there a timer like the board event, or is this a little bit more fluid?
Three minutes.
All right, I'll time myself.
Don't worry, we'll time you too.
Let me get my timer on. So, my name's Kate Hobbick, and I live at 16 Hamilton Lane. I'm here today to talk about bike safety. I know some of you, I'm an avid cyclist, I've done two Ironman triathlons, two 70.3s, I've ridden my bike from New York City to DC, I have ridden my bike from New York City to Montauk, and I now ride my bike every day with my son Henry, who will be seven on Sunday, and my daughter, who's four, in the back of our trailer. I think we have all seen the rise of e-bikes and e-scooters around town, and as drivers and adults recognize that there are vast areas of improvement for training our children to be safer on the roads. I've been leading the Depots Bike Safety Courses for middle schoolers, and over the past week, I've noticed some really interesting stories as well as takeaways that I think the town of Darien can use to make our roads safer, both for the kids and for our adults and the drivers. So, we all know that kids need to learn more, but on our first training session at the Depot, we had kids from Ridgefield, Greenwich, New Canaan, and Darien all attend the training, which I think is testament to the fact that there are kids out there and parents out there who are desperately interested in the knowledge to be safer on the roads. Coming from Ridgefield on a Sunday afternoon at 4 o'clock in the middle of football season, to me spoke volumes, and it was awesome, they listened, they participated. The next class was a little challenging, you know, we had a lot of kids with a lot of energy, and it's hard to make sure that they are understanding the gravity of the choices that they're making on the roads in those moments. What happened, though, at that training was a student at the middle school had participated in the training the day before, came by, was leaving middle school and biking up the road in front of the Depot. He was going slowly on his e-bike, following the rules of the road, traffic, I mean, I was so impressed, I was like, wow, this kid is doing excellent. And he gets up to the light, slows because it's a red light, and the green arrow had not turned, we told them, you have to follow the rules of the flow of traffic. And behind him, a driver was very unhappy that a biker was on the road, started honking incessantly at the kid. I mean, it was so aggressive that everyone in the parking lot of the Depot stopped what they were doing and looked to see what was going on. So, the light turns, the kid bikes away, we think sort of the situation has resolved itself, and about five minutes later, he comes back to us, and he's startled and he's frazzled, and he goes, what did I do, like what did I do wrong, I don't, I don't understand why this guy was honking at me. And I said to him, you did nothing wrong, you did everything right, this guy just didn't want you on the road. And unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to get a picture of his driver's license, otherwise I would have sent it to the police department. And the reason why I share this story is because I think that as a town, we can do better to train our adults and our drivers that aren't necessarily residents of Darien, to show them how to be safer on the roads, including bike signs, because they have to share the road with bikers whether they want to or not. My three minutes is up, it's really important for mental health, so great these kids are on the road, I will respect the three-minute time limit.
Call me or come see me, I'd like to hear more.
Okay, I have a lot more to share.
I know you, and that's why I.
All right, thank you very much.
Who's next? Lois, come on up. You're next on The Price is Right.
Good evening, Lois Schneider, 31 Maywood Road. While I'm an elected official, I'm here representing myself. My topic for tonight is the acquisition of the parking lot at 37 West, and what I would like to make a point of is that a large portion of that parking lot is used by day people going into the city, and when I hear about parking all over, everybody talks about the length of the waitlist for commuters, commuters, commuters. Well, I'm here to make a case and make sure that it stays prominent in your mind, that that lot is ideal and essential for people who do into the city on a daily basis, you know, not on a daily basis, on a periodic basis. I moved to Darien a long time ago as a commuter, but for many, many years, I've been taking advantage, and I stay in this area, because I love going into New York, even at my age. And I go in late at night, and the other piece of it is, I feel very safe, I feel very safe walking to that lot or parking, if I can find other kinds of parking, but if I had to go to Leroy West or Narroton, even Narroton Heights, which is so empty, I can't imagine what I would do. So, my request is that you consider when you look at the acquisition, that keep in mind that a significant portion should be available for people going in for the days. And I've also left my car, I've gone to Philadelphia for a couple of days, and left my car there, and I come back, and it's perfect, you know, you can imagine how easy it is to get on the train, take the train to Philadelphia, come back, get in your car, and go home. So, I don't know that a lot of people look at that lot that way, because parking is usually about commuters, and I want to say, consider the rest of us who are day trippers, and, you know, please make, please make sure we can still do that, so thank you.
Thank you, Lois. Anyone else for a public comment? All right. Next up is new business. First item, discuss and take action on building fee revisions as recommended by the Chief Building Official.
We have Mike Beatty here. Mike, I have your presentation ready, if you want to put it up on the screen, or if you just want to speak to it, that's fine.
That's what was in our packet.
Yep.
Do you have it all set, or?
Yeah, if you use the keyboard, it's minimized.
Any questions?
Looks like the building fee freeze to align closer with some of the other towns, and it's broken into two, potentially two phases, one option where you split them, then one July 1st and one January 1st, and the other one you do it all.
Well, there's two, two ways you could do it, rip the band-aid off quick and go right up to 15, or step it from 12 and then to 15. We took one step out, we were actually going to go 12, 14, and then 15, so we cut one step out. You can see we're low, we're like one of the lowest out of the, New Canaan, I spoke to Brian Platts before he retired, he was going up with his permits, Wilton's thinking about it, Fairfield just did. Commercial, we're low, we're very low on commercial. You see in the houses out there, they're getting larger and larger, we're doing more and more inspections, we're basically cutting the houses in half now, we're doing the upper two floors, so you can start insulating, and finishing up there, and then working our way down from the first floor and the basements. Basically, now all these new homes are, they're finishing off four floors, so you're getting an attic area, a basement area, and then two main levels, so everything's getting bigger. Throw on top of that propane tanks, generators, gas lines, and most houses now are swimming pools, pool houses, so, I mean, inspections are numerous now, so. We feel the 15 is fair price, that's a 1.5% of the total project, up from our 1% we're charging now. We have four inspectors.
For both residential and commercial?
Excuse me?
Both residential and commercial would be 15?
Yeah.
Hey Mike, when's the last time we adjusted fees?
I've been here 20 years, and it was well before me.
Yeah, so we've done this in the past where we have this, I don't think this is actually, in my opinion, a significant jump, but maybe we need to have a look at these things, like on a more regular basis, and, but I support your numbers and I support implementing this in January. I don't really see the benefit, I mean, I don't think our contractors care about our calendar.
They're passing along to the residents, but I mean, they're getting a great service too, I mean, we bend over backwards for a lot of these guys, we go out multiple times, if they fail, we go back out, either the same day or the next day. They're maybe the tops, they're waiting, if we try to get everything done within 48 hours for an inspection after you call it in, paying on the scheduling of who your inspector is, he might have to go to 72, but we're one of the quickest around.
And you're keeping track of that metric, right?
Oh yeah, Ashley does.
Yeah, okay.
No, I would agree, I think putting all this at once, it just minimizes confusion, it's done one time, so I think that's right. Sarah, Mike, Marcy, any questions?
No, I agree, I think January's a great start point.
Yeah, how do you advertise or inform people?
How would you do that, so would we?
Well, we have to do something, we'll talk to Jen, we'll set something up. We could do something on our website, we talked to Ashley, my administrator, she could set something up on our website. We got Instagram, we have a multitude of social media, we could get it out on, but is there, with a town attorney, is there a certain amount of time we have to wait, or is it?
No, once it's, Board of Selectmen just has to approve it based on your recommendation, and then they can make it effective January 1st, and then it'll take the next few months to.
So, January 1st will be the date, so anything, any application that goes into Jeremy, it would start then, so anything right now, in the wheel, in the processor, in the queue, wouldn't take effect until, even though you started now, you don't get your building permit till after January 1st, you'd still be under the old.
Well, that begs a question, actually, so is it, is the new rate effective for any application received from January 1st, or is it?
Received into planning and zoning.
Okay, so if they submit the application now, it's still under the old fees?
Still under the old fees.
It's just when the application hits your desk, then it's the new fee, okay.
Same as when we have a change in the building code, as long as your application is before the date change, then you qualify for that old.
And we can do this without RTM or public hearing or anything like that?
Correct. Yeah, Mike, I think though, including somewhere in the social message, when the last time was that rates were adjusted.
I could try going back through the old.
Yeah, it might help people.
I think it's been a while.
Yeah, if it's not too confusing.
Okay, I'll work with Marley, and we can try to help supplement the communication for all that.
That's some of the rates we're going to go to. We're going to try to simplify some of our pricing, instead of contract price on certain things, we're going to go to square footage, basically on the roofing and siding, we're going to buy squares, not by the price, because it varies too much. Residential demos, we're going to change to, to just one price. Pools and accessory structures, we're going to change to one firm price, try to simplify it.
Is your commercial and residential demo the same?
No, residential's going to be $400 for a dwelling, $150 for accessory structure or a pool, and commercial, we're going to ask for the contract, because we think we're getting, we're getting false information on some stuff and not others, so same thing with residential, it varies from $15,000 to $60,000, I mean, there's a wide range, so set one feet just kind of towards in the middle average, where I think it should be, and we'll go from there.
So, for an example, for the re-roofing apartments, right now, let's say you had a $20,000 re-roofing job, you would be paying $200, if my math is working, what would be the new proposed?
It would be on, it would be on, let's square, every hundred square feet of roofing, so roofing square is 100 square feet, 10 by 10 section.
Okay, so it's not like one asphalt.
No, 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 it's a 10 by 10 section of roof.
Okay, thank you.
It's one square, so it would be $15 for every square.
Every hundred foot.
Yeah, because some guys are saying that a roof costs them 300 to do, where the average lately's been over 500, over almost excess of $1,000 a square.
Wow.
So, we're trying to figure the average out, what works for the best, so I think 15 would be a fair amount for every square.
Other questions? Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the building fee revisions as recommended by the Chief Building Official, all to take effect January 1st, 2026? Sarah Moose, Monica Seconds, are in favor? Okay, Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is discuss and take action on adoption of an ordinance for the abatement that elicited sump pump discharge into public sewers and recommend to the RTM. Mr. Gentile?
With my luck, I'll knock it over or something. Again, Ed Gentile, Director of Public Works, what you have in your packet today from us is the beginning of a code of ordinance change resolution, but before we get started, I want to introduce the sewer commission members that are here, going from left to right, Bob Hill, Craig Flaherty, and Reese Hutchinson, have been on this board for many, many years. They don't come out past 7 o'clock, so this is new for them.
Before they invented sewers, I think.
Yes. But what I'd like to do is just kind of give you like an overview of how we got to where we are right now, and what this is going to do for us. You know, after doing the INI study, we came up with some information that showed that we had infiltration from the ground going into our pipes, as well as direct inflow from connection, illicit connections to our sanitary sewer. So, as we started going through about two-thirds of the town sewer shed, our Stony Brook Sewer Shed, we found that there were sump pumps that were connected. We looked at some additional data along the water's edge also, where the low-lying areas, the basements seem to be more susceptible and do have sump pumps, and I've noticed some of our runtimes and some of our pump stations were running a little bit longer after these larger storms, kind of got us thinking with our consultant, you know, is this a direct correlation between the sump pumps being connected, and is this something that we should be going after and trying to address? That was four years ago. We finally, after many iterations and hard discussions at the Sewer Commission, decided that we're going to see if we can get a buy-in from our users, right? And what we decided we would do is send you out a letter, and that's in here, there's a nice cover letter, bless you.
Thank you.
Nice cover letter in there, nice red print, attention needed, you got to do something, explains what we're doing, we're looking for buy-in, right? We're looking for you to buy in and help us identify these illicit connections and see if we can eliminate them, the idea is to eliminate them. What we do with this, the flow from these sump pumps, is we basically send clean water over to the city of Stanford, and we pay to have it cleaned again, so we're having it treated and processed, flows that really shouldn't be going over there, so not punitive, we're looking for collaboration, so this affidavit is asking, do you have a sump pump? And we're asking you to return it to us, and we are going to address all 54-plus users and asking them to let us know if they have them or not, and the hope is that people won't let us know that they don't. People let us know that they do, but it's discharging outside, or it is and it goes to the sanitary sewer system now. It all comes with steps after that. Part of our job is going to be helping the residents, if they're connected to the sanitary sewer, find another place to connect, right? That's the whole idea here, it's trying to find out who is connected and starting to help them eliminate those connections. Now, this is proposed to start this January, with the hopes that this resolution passes, it gets through the RTM, and that we can actually move forward with these notifications, so January, there'll be a mass mailing sent out. Knowing that this is around the holidays, my suggestion to the commission was, instead of telling them they have ninety days to return it, or they, there'd be a fine assessed, I'll send another one out in April, kind of a reminder. And this kind of gives you the sense that we're trying to just get information from you so that we can actually address our issue, which is paying for clean water to be treated. And our payments to the city of Stanford are, right now, out of a four-point-four million dollar budget, is three-point-six million in treatment to the city of Stanford. It's almost seventy-five percent. We're trying to get that number down. A lot of our work that we've done so far with the sanitary sewer, the lining of the pipes, the lining of the manholes, the water type manholes, all of those things, the illicit connections that we did find and eliminated, have started to show some results now. And I think the low-hanging fruit was easy. This seems to be something that we need to work closely with our residents, with our users, to see if this next, and it appears to be a little larger than one would think, to get these flows back down to where they're manageable, to where our money is being spent on our system here in town, not the treatment of clean water. So I'd like to say that, you know, through this process and the multiple meetings that we've discussed, we did previously meet with the First Selectmen, we met John Zagrotzky, Craig and myself, we kind of went over what our thought process was and where we'd like to go with that. We did also take the opportunity to meet with the Public Works Committee, to get their feedback also. Just trying to vet it a little better than just the five of us and Darren and myself. So, you know, with that said, I'd like to, you know, answer any questions you may have. I will tell you, the packet does have multiple, multiple pages of stuff in there. Sorry to do that to you, but I kind of, and the cover letter that Darren put together was kind of tell you what that all was, but we did have to put the legal documents in there also from our town attorney that has helped us do this. I understand I do have some corrections to make, there are some typos in there, but we will get on that, of course. Unless the Sewer Commission members have anything they'd like to say, I take any questions?
For those, for our residents who may have sump pumps, and they imagine that there's, there may be some residents that don't even realize that they have these pumps that moved into these houses, or if they have them have no idea what they are connected to. Are you able, someone in town able, if asked, to come over and assess it?
We're, I'd like to do that for everyone, but what I did with the backflow valves is what I'm going to do now. They'll call, I returned every phone call I got on backflow valves. I looked at the maps, I looked at, but my final comment was, I can't come out and look at every single one. I recommend who you would call for your plumber to have him come over and look at. Most of them come over and do it for nothing, and just to help you out. Those are the things we'd like to recommend. And as we move forward, the process is pretty simple, it's not, you know, black and white. There's gonna be situations that are gray, and these three gentlemen, along with the two other members of the Sewer Commission, are there to adjudicate, if you will, how to move forward on some of the trickier ones, and they're gonna be tricky ones. Where do we discharge? There's no place we can put it, and those are things that will be discussed, and like I said, it's not punitive. We can hold off on fines as long as we'd like to, if you're working with us, and we give you that opportunity to do that.
Subly, we were.
Did you have a chance to test this with residents at all, or did you get any interesting feedback that maybe we didn't discuss when you talked to Public Works?
The Public Works Committee was very supportive. They made some suggestions on the cover letter that would help people understand a little better of what we're trying to do as. They wanted us to nice it down, it would seem too structured, which, you know, I took the heart, engineer wrote the letter. Those things happen. So we worked together, we, the five commissioners, Darren and stuff, and we softened it. We turned it into more of a collaboration than anything else, and I think that helped. Now, I understand there were some people that were gonna, we all kind of wanted to have someone look at the affidavit. I had my wife look at it. Can you understand it? Is it something that you can follow? She said it seemed pretty straightforward. I don't know if the other gentleman had done that yet, but that was, that was some of the charge that we had, was to get some feedback on the affidavit. We, literally, it's been on the table, on our agenda for over a year, as we worked our way through this process, to make sure it was self-explanatory, but it covered our needs, but explained why they were doing certain things with photos. And here's where you send it, and we're gonna have it stored on the server where it comes in. It's so much easier to go back in every address and be able to make sure we followed everything through. Yes?
Two questions, is this going out to every resident?
No.
Okay, so this is, you mentioned fifty-two.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, thank you.
Fifty-four hundred.
Hundred.
I have not been following, I'm sorry, fifty-four hundred?
Hundred.
Yeah.
Oh.
The sewer users, the ones that get the sewer bills, will get these.
Okay, well, so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if it was fifty-four people, fifty-four hundred people.
Fifty-four hundred residents.
Okay, so you're asking fifty-four hundred residents to complete this?
Yes.
Okay, but do we know the certain number of individuals, residences, or businesses with the INI study that are not compliant? Do we have an idea?
It would be, it would be a guess, if anything, but no, I don't, I don't have a solid idea, but.
Craig does.
I think Craig does.
Just in terms of the scope of the problem, in, Craig Flaherty, Chairman of the Sewer Commission, the scope of the problem is, in a rainy year, half of the water that we send to Stanford is clean water.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm with you, preaching to the converted.
We don't know this.
I'm just curious, do we know?
We don't know the number.
Okay, that's, okay.
And that's part of why we're doing this, there's no way to know without being in the house and seeing if it's connected.
Got it. Thank you.
Questions?
You know what, I looked at this pretty close, I do have some typo kind of, and some suggestions for a little bit of clarity, but I just want to say, I know that you guys have been working on this for so long. I know that you've done other outreach, you've sent, you know, your little red notices, and so if this is where we are to get this problem solved, because what has been discussed and implemented so far hasn't been super impactful, I think this is a great idea, but I'd love to sit down with you just to check.
I would love to, somehow on this one, I know it's very long, put in there that right now, our current budget for sending water to Stanford is at four million dollars. If there's a way to have a resident understand what their taxes are now paying for, and we're trying to reduce that, and this is why we're trying to do this, it's millions, yeah.
Yep, it's pretty important, I agree.
I agree with that, sir.
Anyway, I've been in discussions about this for a while, so I applaud the effort, but I know it's taken a long time, but this is important. And I think your words were also important, which is, this is not meant to be punitive, it's meant to bring people to the table, tell us what you got, let us take a look, let us try to get a sense that it'll help you and work with you to get into resolution of this so that we can solve the exact problem you're talking about, so thank you, it's great.
I see nothing but a big benefit coming from this. Anything that has to do with influencing our sanitary sewer, especially if you can take it and visually put it on a map, if addresses of sump pumps, if you will, will give me a better idea why I'm having a certain problem at a pump station, right? If there's a whole load of, a whole many sump pumps. Now I know why X station runs a full day after everything else shuts down after a larger storm. Those are good indicators for me that there's an issue there that we can address.
Who's gonna be managing fifty-four hundred responses with the photos and compiling that information?
I have a full staff of three and a half people right now. That were, and we had some volunteers from the Sewer Commission that said that she would, she would help us, but she's not here today, though.
She's under the bus, guy.
No, I think she's, she's not feeling well today, but she did say she would help.
Anything else for Red?
Yes, thank you.
John, can I ask you a quick question just on timing?
Go.
You want to send this out January first, I'm looking to how I back this up in the RTM, so that you get it within hours, we recently lost Frank. When do you leave this approved by? It might be tight in October, November, we can put it on, but typically, we would have to ensure that they understand that it's going in October. I think the December meeting, which is state of the town, would be too late.
Yeah.
Okay, so what would you prefer if I can't get it done in October with the new organization there, TTSNA?
I heard November and December were very different meetings. With the elections and the things, so.
We've done business in November before, so we can do in November again, because the committees are still cast the way they are until their replacements are, that's part of appendix B. So we can still do it in November, but your real goal is to get it in October?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll give it a call tomorrow to see how we facilitate that.
Thank you very much.
If you can do it in October, I'm hoping that, because this has been simmering for such a long time, it's not controversial. So, but let's track for that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Did the RTM, PWs, did they vote on this?
No, that was kind of informal rollout, they tell us what you think, any feedback we could implement into the documentation.
Okay, absent further discussion, could I get a motion to, let's see.
You have a resolution in the packet?
Thank you.
It was the first page of that section.
Oh, here, sorry. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Darien, the Board of Selectmen acting in its capacity as the Water Pollution Control Authority of the town of Darien, to recommend the adoption of an ordinance for the abatement of illicit sump pump discharge into public sewers and recommend so to the RTM? Monica, move, Sarah seconds, on favor. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Next up, discuss and take action on an amendment to the code ordinances to establish zoning citation regulations and recommend to the RTM. Chairman?
Good evening, everyone. Quite an interesting night, putting together new ordinances, new proposals. Here to talk, I think I've spoken with the Board of Selectmen before, a little bit about zoning citations. A few years ago, the state legislature gave communities the ability to find zoning violators. So in my many years here, while someone may violate the zoning regulations, we can issue a notice of violation, we can issue a cease and desist order, we can work with our fellows at CB&amp;B to bring them to court. However, what we really want is the issue remedied, we want it resolved. Courts, if they find the violator guilty, can certainly issue fines, but up until recently, towns could not find anybody, we didn't have that ability. So when the state statutes changed a few years ago, we did not want to be front and center, so a number of other communities were kind of the canaries in the coal mine and were very helpful in putting together their ordinances, most notably in Fairfield County. Weston and Norwalk, spoken to the folks in Norwalk, who said it's actually proven to be quite a solution, that sometimes, just sitting with a hearing officer and the violator and the zoning officer in a room, can sometimes solve it, or at least give a timeframe for solving it. The state statutes give a very clear limit on how much per day, it's a hundred fifty dollars per day maximum. So it's not a large fine, and certainly, we have no interest in getting people's money. What we want is the issue resolved, the violation remedied. So with our goal being compliance, it really is, and the violations could be anything, it could be a very small thing, it could be a very big thing, but it gives us that ability to send a notice to the violator, say, if you don't correct it, we have the ability to find you, and we're optimistic that this can be another tool for us to use relative to enforcement and improving our enforcement efforts to get things resolved in a more timely manner. So you can see from the draft ordinance I submitted, it does set up a procedure that needs to be followed very clearly by the zoning enforcement officer, how you notify someone, what their appeal rights are to the hearing officer in terms of how long they have to appeal the citation. It does require, the state statutes do require, that the First Selectmen appoint a hearing officer who can hear appeals in cases, it could be one, more than one hearing officer, actually. And so what we're looking to do is get this set up for early next year, whether January, February, whatever it might be, and really start rolling that out. As I said, it's been proven to be successful in other places, so I am optimistic that we can use this as an effective tool, rather than going to court where need be, which is also an effective tool, albeit a more expensive effective tool.
So is it effective this, that, for example, if the fines aren't collected in cash, you would put appropriate liens on the property, or maybe deny them certain permits or certifications, say, a CO, for example, if they have not paid these fines, is that?
I think more.
Tightest ways you could enforce this?
I think more so is pursuing the fines, and I think there is a provision for collecting the fines and liens, but certainly that gives us the ability, if we do have to spend time, money, and effort pursuing the fines, that is a good thing for the town. It's not just pursuing the enforcement issue, it's pursuing the fines and the enforcement, which is, again, to me, the enforcement is more important than the hundred fifty dollars a day or whatever.
This would apply to kind of any zoning regulation whatsoever? So if in your discretion or the commission's discretion, there is a violation or non-adherence to any one of those regulations, you could levy that fine?
That's correct, big, small, whatever it might be, whether it's a, you know, a boat, a sign, or something bigger, working without permits, construction done incorrectly, whatever it is, that's a violation of the zoning regulations, we're able to pursue it under this section. I think that's clear from the proposal.
Questions, Board of General?
So Jeremy, the, you, I guess you're following other communities' dollar amounts, so you're giving people five days to solve the problem, and then it's a hundred fifty dollars per day after that?
That's correct.
Is that, because that seems a little steep, is that typical?
That is the max allowed by the state, and that is typically what we've found in the other.
It is.
Ordinances. So really, what, and again, what I, because I thought about this as well, I said, you know, this seems a little, but at this point, we're not issuing the citation the first thing. The citation might be the second or third thing you hear from our department. So it might be a visit from the zoning officer, hey, I see your whatever is incorrect, can you please remedy it? Then the next step might be a notice of violation or a cease and desist order, you know. So usually, by the time it gets to citation, the person is aware of the problem, they have chosen not to remedy it. At that point, currently, our remaining option would be these gentlemen in the back of the room, walking with them to Stanford Superior Court.
Right, and I think that it's a great team, but if we could not use that team, I think that's a great idea.
And I think, I think the threat of the fine might help us alleviate some of it, but also the ability to, for the hearing officer, even if they do appeal it, the hearing officer sit at the table with them and say, look, what do you want to do here? How can you resolve it? How can you work with the town on getting this moved along? And if you don't, that's okay, the town will pursue it as allowed by state statute.
So my last question is, how will you communicate this to our residents, this new policy? How would you suggest we do that?
I think it's gonna be what Mike Viti talked about a while ago, whether it's a combination of the website, it's a combination of social media, it's a combination of maybe even a notice in our office, ways for us to make it known to folks. But also, I think it's up to the zoning officer in his notices of violation to include them. And by the way, if you do not remedy, the town has recently adopted a zoning citation, which would allow me to issue you a ticket at a hundred fifty dollars each day. You would of course have the right to appeal it, but our goal here is. You would, of course, have the right to appeal it, but our goal here is resolving and having you comply with the regulations.
I have two questions. Do you have an identified list of individuals who currently have a zoning regulation issue?
I don't know if I have a list written. I probably have a few people in my head who I'm like, oh, yeah, we've been working with them, I'm trying to get them to resolve their issues. And sometimes they're slow to respond, sometimes they drag their feet, sometimes there's extenuating circumstances. I've heard it all.
Okay.
I'm aware of a number of candidates.
I'm sure. I would like, very quick, give me an example of a zoning regulation issue and how it would be addressed in a timely fashion.
I think in the case I'm thinking of, we have a person that had a requirement for planning and zoning to have this whole rear property line, it's a commercial property landscape, 16-foot trees or 10-foot trees, whatever were in the plans. When planning and zoning approved his plan, there was a row of trees. If we went out there today, the trees are gone, they've died, they're, so we told this gentleman, you need to put these trees back, this is what was on your approved plan. And we are now in October, as I stand here today, we've been telling him that since March of 2023.
So, since March of 2023?
Exactly, but it's been going on a long time.
I'm just trying, okay, so dead trees?
Yeah.
And he's going to be fined $150 a day until those trees are replaced? So, what happens during the winter? They don't plan to anything during the winter?
He's got a number of, a long list of.
Right, but what if you have a new person? I'm just trying to, like, understand for a resident who may have a zoning, may have moved into a house, didn't realize there was a zoning issue that existed. It's not easy to get a contractor to your house, it's not, you know, like, I'm just trying to understand.
So, what we're looking for, that's a great point, and I'm glad you asked that question, it's when the zoning officer would go out there, he'd say, oh, you have a shed or a deck or whatever it might be, a boat, whatever, or you put up a sign. He'd say, hey, that's a violation. What can you do to get this resolved in a timely manner? And the person might say just what you said, hey, my, I have an extenuating personal thing, I'm going out of town for two weeks, can I do it when I get back? Yes, or whatever it is. So, we've been working with people on, do you need a week, do you need two weeks, do you need three weeks to resolve this? Give us your timeframe, and if it's a reasonable timeframe, glad to work with you, because what we want is the issue to be resolved. And if it takes two, three weeks, as long as it's not really upsetting people or really a public health or safety thing, yeah, three weeks might be an appropriate resolution to, I got to get my boat back in the water, the marina's closed, I got to find a new marina. Great, take a week or two, find a new marina, let us know when the boat's back in the water, or back at the marina. Working with people, I think, is the key here, giving them a reasonable chance, reasonable opportunity, and what we've found, because if you're reasonable with people.
I think I'm just concerned, like, if you had a homeowner that bought something, didn't realize it was a zoning violation, you know, and it was a part of their house or something that they suddenly had to resolve and find a contractor and fix it, that's got to be scary, and then there's a $150 a day fine. I don't know if I'm imagining this, I don't know if I'm extrapolating, I don't know if this is something that could come about, I'm just, that's a tough thing, I think.
In my experience, I think many folks know that there's an issue. It would be very rare for someone to not know that they're in violations, from what I've seen. Usually, what we see is people, when we approach someone with that very uncomfortable conversation, that whatever you're, either you're working without permits, of course, they would know that.
Got it, got it.
We've had a couple of those where, like, oh, and, you know, so, yes, please come in and get the permit, keep this moving along, but you have to get the permit. Or, as I said, boats or signs, banners, this gentleman who's in violation of his previous site plan because he's, these trees are just gone.
Got it.
We want, we want him to fix it. But in a case like this, it is, today was the nicest day ever, tomorrow will be nice, and then the weather will turn.
Right.
Like it does every year in New England, as I've told this gentleman. It's been doing this for tens of thousands of years. November, December gets cold, please put these trees in before November, of course.
One thing to add to that, I've been dragged into a number of these cases, and the fines that we're talking about, I've got a mental list of people who've just said, we're not going to follow any of these rules, and they are first on that list or all that stuff. The people that you're talking about, I've seen him have empathy with circumstances.
No, and I appreciate that, I think that's normal.
You've raised a very good point there, and we should assure residents that this is not about sort of chasing down and finding everybody we can find, but those residents who are not doing this, and you know who you are.
Repeat offenders.
You are on the list.
Understood.
And we, I have no hesitation.
Thank you.
For them, so.
You know, I don't have any questions. I think it's important, what you said, John, to have it be, you know, unnoticed, whether you're disputing whether or not it is a violation, which is different from saying, oh, I need some time, obviously, those, you know, one would generate a hearing automatically to determine whether it's a violation, the other, you're working with the person. But I wonder if, since we're starting to do this for the first time, that we not start by finding the max per day, perhaps $100 a day as we start administering this program might be beneficial, we can always be kicked up to the full. And, you know, I might be wrong on this, and shame on me if I am wrong on this, but I think the light fines are $100 a day. But it's two different statutes, it's two different things.
Yeah, but I think what Jeremy is saying is that this didn't come out of left field, right? These people have been notified, they've been talking to the office, so.
And this is a way of recourse that we haven't previously had?
Yeah, I think the incentive here is the existence of the fine as opposed to, we could fine them $50 a day for six months, and all of a sudden, it goes to $100 a day, and suddenly, oh, boy, you're right, $100 a day, I simply can't afford that, I'm not sure they would, that would change the, change the answer on enforcement. I think Jeremy's point of, and kind of building on what you said, which is, every case is unique, carefully work with those folks, and you'll know it when you see it, that it's time for a fine, but it's just like these few cases I've been involved in, it's time for fines, like, right now.
The only suggestion I have, and I support the $150, because by the time you get to that point, it's, the trade has been moving and they know what they're in violation. The only thing that I would, as we implement this, and if we start to see that people are starting to get concerned about how long we're giving them to rectify whatever their situation is, because some of them are really small, right? A boat in a yard is really easy, but you have somebody who's running a daycare out of their house or running, you know, a boarding, that's their livelihood. They're going to have to have a really long, extensive period in which they're kind of changing, so I don't want to walk in right away and have this, so there's a lot of gray in that sort of beginning conversation period. If we find that residents are not complying and then getting to the point where they're showing up at your office and they're getting disgruntled and irritated because they didn't know, we might have to start to look at sort of making it more black and white on what the procedure is in the beginning portion before the finding happens, right? So, if you have somebody who needs to remove a boat, okay, we can say, you've got 30 days to do it, and then we go into the hearing period. If you've got somebody who's running a dog grooming business out of their house, well, that's a little longer than 30 days, and you certainly don't want somebody to have to lose their livelihood. So, I just, as we move forward and think about and implement this, we probably should keep eyes on those different cases.
You're absolutely right, in terms of certain things, like, hey, can you take down the banner?
Right.
That's a 15-minute, someone with a stepladder can be solved tomorrow morning. Hey, I got 12 dogs in the house, the folks aren't coming home till 5 o'clock today, can you give me till 5? Yeah. So, it's finding the right remedy, and as John mentioned, one could argue, we're almost a little too patient with people nowadays.
No, but I think the theme you're getting at here is, is just your good judgment.
Yep, absolutely.
Sort of when to start pressing with fines, because to your point, if it's a business and it's time to comply, or it's a surprise to someone, work with them, and when you pull that trigger, just make sure that it passes the reasonable person test.
Yes.
Absolutely, and that's the key here, is giving people an opportunity to remedy it themselves. Yeah, I think people always feel better if they're able to solve it rather than forced, being forced to do so. And so, that, it leaves a nice feeling with people usually, that they were able to resolve it on their terms, so to speak, without being a burden to the community.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions for Jeremy?
No, thank you.
Okay, could I get a motion for, to approve the resolution of, a resolution of the Board of Selectment of the Town of Darien recommending the adoption of a zoning citation ordinance for the enforcement of zoning regulations? To the representative, Tony. Marcy Moos? Monica seconds, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeremy, when are you trying to get this, are you trying to get this on?
You know, I'll defer to Jack and his team over at the town clerk's office and town council. Whatever they can do is great, if it's January, it's January, if it's February, it's February.
You got to remember it first, which is helpful.
But from, I just spoke to Wade before, both of these ordinances are already written, so they've been reviewed by Wade, which should facilitate something in TGSNA. What I'll ask you, same thing I just asked Ed, can you send to my email the package, because it's too hard for me to extract it from theirs?
Sure.
And then I'll get it to TGSNA and send it over to Amy as well, so that they can work on it before rules.
Beautiful. Thanks, Jack. Well, thank you all.
Thank you. Next up, discuss and take action on a resolution authorizing the purchase of 37 West Avenue and an appropriation and bonding resolution for said purpose. Okay, we've discussed this in executive session, so this is the first time we're having a public discussion about this, so for viewers, this is the Coons Lot, parking lot that is over by the Darien Train Station, that has been in the Coons family for decades, actually. Sarah, for your request, we pulled out a title document from the clerk's office today, actually interesting, the acquisition of the property was in two pieces. The first acquisition was for a smaller lot that was bought from the railroads company, Metro North, I guess it was, is now, but it wasn't called that at that time. That first purchase was in the early 1950s, and then there was a subsequent purchase for a larger piece of land in 1963, and that was from the Florentine families where all that came from. So, anyway, those documents kind of confirm all that, and I'll get back to that in a minute. It has been a paid parking lot since acquisition, so there's not really been any other business or anything like that. They had looked at trying to, Kip's father actually had looked at trying to put the post office there, and that fell through, they looked at retail and other businesses, and all that fell through, and it has just so happened that it's been a paid parking lot, literally, for decades. So, the families decided that they would like to sell. We started discussions, or at least I did, in March of this year when I sat down with Kip and let me know that the family was interested in selling the lot and interested in selling to the town. And so, we started discussions about that in earnest in June. Town council and the Coons family attorneys began to meet at that point, and the key work streams that they kicked off were to, one is to get an appraisal. Curtis Brinkerhoff hired Karen Infazio, who has done a lot of appraisal work for us. The direction that we gave them, based on advice from a number of folks, was to appraise the property at the highest invested-use valuation. The reason for that is, right now, it's valuation on tax rolls is for what it is today, which is a parking lot. So, if the family decided to sell that property, they're going to sell it to someone who can pay highest invested-use valuations for it, and that would be a developer. In talking with everyone, we have felt that this is a good property for the town to own, which I'll get to more in a minute, and that if we were to, in fact, acquire the property at a price the Coons family and the LLC that owns this would be willing to accept, that it would have to be based on an appraisal at that highest and best use standard, and that's really what properties like this are going to sell for in the open market. Interesting, if you read through the appraisal that we got, a lot of the comparable sales are, in fact, recent properties that transacted here in town, and they're all in the zip code of what this property was valued at. So, in addition to that, Reddison Mead conducted a new property and topographical survey and discovered no issues with that process. We also had an environmental review done by GCA Geo-Environmental, they were the ones who did some work out on Great Island. What they conducted, though, was a phase one review, and a phase one review is a very brief site visit, but it's mostly focused on an analysis of the public records, and what they look for is whether there are any specific environmental conditions, and there's several types of those. There's a recognized environmental condition, a controlled recognized environmental condition, where obviously the condition is under remediation, and then an historical recognition, recognized environmental condition. These are all defined terms that I won't go into, but basically, what they said in their analysis is that they don't believe or see any records or issues pointing to any environmental concerns on that property. And in fact, their quotation in the survey was the following, which is, based on the findings of our phase one environmental analysis, it's their opinion that no further investigation of the subject property is warranted at this time. So, we'll get to this in the questions in a moment, but I'll come back to that in a second. So, in terms of why we would acquire this property, I guess I would state that the strategic acquisition rationale is as follows, in long term, we believe it's in the town's interest to own this property. Long-term options include continuing to operate it as a surface parking lot, as it is today. We could consider building a parking garage there that could accommodate commuters and downtown retail employees, both paying for that parking, which would free up parking in our downtown business district. We could even consider transit-oriented multifamily housing, which is something that's an important objective of the state, and this property being right next to the Darien Train Station would certainly qualify for that. I don't know where we're going with any of those options, this board, and with the advice of a lot of others, needs to give that some serious thought, which we will do, there's no urgency. But the main reason for acquiring this property is that the town gets to decide because we control the outcome, as opposed to someone, say, a third party buying this property and then deciding what to do without town input. So, beyond the strategic rationale, we have looked at the revenue, parking volume, and all that dating back a number of years. In your package, and we will post all of this online for everyone to review, but in your package, I have a little spreadsheet here which has numbers supplied to us by the family that goes into parked cars and volume of parked cars since 2016 through September 22nd of this year, as well as the revenue generated by those cars. What you see is, actually, that there was substantial volumes back pre-COVID, so 2016 through 2019, annual parked car volume was in the low 50,000s, and parking rates at that time at $8 per day was generating revenue in the low $400,000 per year. COVID disrupted their business significantly, so much so that for an entire year, 2021, they collected no revenue unless someone actually put it in an envelope and left it in the box because their parking attendant was not working there, and they did not have good car counts. So, once the pandemic abated, the annual parking is down, down in the low $30,000, or 30,000 cars per year, as opposed to in the low 50s back prior to the pandemic. They increased the daily parking rates from $8 to $10 effective January 1st of this year, and right now, based on that rate, they're estimating that we would get somewhere, or that they would get somewhere in the low $300,000 a year for 2025, again, based on $10 a day and a parking volume of about 34,000. So, what else can I say about that? The only other thing that we've done is looked at those parking volumes, it does look like parking volumes are increasing this year. If you look at the analysis that they provided on the first 39 weeks of 2025, it looks like parking volumes are up about 8%, and that's even with the price increase at the start of this year, so that bodes well for that lot continuing to fill up. We also looked at other expenses that the family has incurred for operating the lot, these range from payroll for the parking attendant to insurance premiums that they had to pay, even property taxes on the lot, which are about $30,000 a year. These are all expenses that the town will not face when we assume ownership of it, certainly in the long term, since our plan is to integrate the lot into the other commuter lots that we have. We've also done an analysis of how this might be paid for. I'm going to go through this in more detail when the Board of Finance meets on the 21st, but also in your package is an analysis that Jennifer and Josh Kaufman prepared that shows how, how. how financing of this might work under both 20- and 30-year debt or bond tenure assumptions, the annualized car assumptions that I described, and the daily rates that I mentioned before. One thing to note is that, like most of our debt financings, we will have the first two years of that debt financing be interest only, followed by principal and interest for the remainder of the bond. So if you look at our analyses, clearly, for the first two years, whatever revenue we generate, whether it's $10 a day or $5 a day, we would be able to cover the interest payments on that for those two years. Later on, once it's principal and interest, not all of the parking revenue would be sufficient to cover that debt service, though it certainly would contribute. I'll go into more detail with that with the Board of Finance, but you've got those notes in your packet. I'll close with just a sense of the current plan through December 31st. So anybody who's parking there, what I'd recommend is that we continue to operate the lot as is. So current, the current parking lot attendant, Kip, has been in touch with him, and he's agreed to stay on board for the period of time that we're talking about. We would have no price changes for now, but we would not be selling any monthly or quarterly passes, at least for the time being. And all commuters who are parking there now would remain eligible to park in that lot, which is both Darien residences and as well as folks coming from other areas. Next steps are a little complicated. So at this meeting, we're going to do a few things. We, assuming the vote is yes, we would vote to recommend the purchase to the Board of Finance. We're going to vote for a bond authorization, not obligation, but authorization, if the Board of Finance decides to finance this with long-term debt. We're going to vote to do what's called a mandatory referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they will determine whether this purchase meets the requirement of the town's plan of conservation and development. We are able to do all that in this meeting to start that process. We're also going to initiate the scheduling of a public hearing, which is important with regard to the pricing for this lot. I know everyone loves to hear my voice, but I'm going to stop, and I'm going to have Jennifer explain this point. Go.
Personally, statute, the RTM would have the authority to set parking rates, but through our code of ordinances, they have granted that authority to the Board of Selectmen. But they will be required to approve the purchase and set the initial rate, but once that is set, in order for it to be implemented and to fully incorporate the lot into the parking regulations, it has to come back to you. And that requires a public hearing, notice two weeks in advance, action by you, and then once your action is taken, it has to be published for 15 days before it becomes effective.
And so what we want to do is, I guess, tentatively, set that date for October 30th.
Right.
We will set in motion the notices for all that, get all the paperwork organized, and ensure that we meet that schedule. But all of these things have to happen in order for the lot to be acquired and for us to collect revenue based at the current pricing. Okay. So October 6th today is everything I said that we would vote on. The Planning and Zoning Commission will take up the mandatory referral at their meeting tomorrow, October 7th. Board of Finance meets on the 21st to recommend approval to the RTM. The RTM will meet and discuss and vote on October 27th. They'll also vote on the lot pricing, just as Jennifer described, and the payment options. Right now, we have a lot attendant, but as Jennifer said, we'd have to have that approved since the ordinance does not provide for that. October 30th would be the tentative public hearing, and then assuming the positive RTM vote on the 27th. November 7th would be the last day of the 10-day referendum period following the RTM's vote. So that is a ton of information all at once. Again, you've had this in your packet, and we have discussed this at some length. Let me stop there and see if anyone has any questions, and then we can invite Bobby or others to come up and address some of this.
I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to express to people who are watching that this has been a topic of considerable investigation by this board and consideration of alternatives that were naturally part of a negotiation process. So I'm still, you know, for this, you know, purchase. I think it's the smart thing to do. I'm glad to know that we are not going to rush into any kind of consideration of capital improvements, you know, for this property. I know our town's people are aware of the debt we've been taking on lately, and if it were not for the fact that this could be very self-sustaining and very much in our citizens' interest, it would be easy to pass this opportunity up. But the way it came to us and the way that it can help this town really merits, I think, it's the purchase of this property.
I echo exactly what Mike said.
Monica agrees. Okay.
I have a question on the numbers. So what's the, what is the current capacity there as far as spaces available and being used? There are 320 spaces?
You said that most who's ever parked there is 293 cars. That's their max count.
So these numbers are based on what vacancy rate or whatever, what utilization, do we know?
I'd have to go through, well, I can't do quick math, but it would basically be 293 spaces times five days times 52 weeks. I mean, I'd have to take out vacations and all that, but it's clear that the lot is operating at well below capacity right now.
So it's not at 95%?
Nope. Not very close to that. That's great.
Okay. And I think Lois's point about having parking that's not commuter oriented, having day spots available, and that's, I think, what a lot of people use this lot for, is a good point.
Yeah, let me bring up a few other issues that have come up. So one of them is the environmental study that we did. So that study, as I mentioned, really reviews the public record to see if there had been anything that would hint at a, an environmental concern that we should look at. I actually have a picture of the Darien train station, which has most of the Kip Coons lot, in that picture from the 1940s hanging in my office. And there's, there's not anything there. There was a little stream that kind of went through it, and the Leroy East parking lot is actually, has some cars there, but the rest of the land appears to be blank. When I talked to Krista McNamara, our clerk, going through these records today, I asked her to look and say, is there any evidence of any structure or buildings anywhere with this property? And she reviewed all this carefully, and we met about it today, and there is not. There is the question, though, as to whether, in an abundance of caution, we should consider a more in-depth environmental review. Bobby, we spent some time with you on the phone today. Maybe you could kind of talk about this if you talked to GZA Environmental today.
Robert Burney, Law Firm, Curtis, Goff, and Barrett. Yes, we did, we spoke today with Representative at GZA, Anthony Tranny, about the concerns of whether a phase two is necessary here. And I expressed the time, and I still express it now. In terms of risk meter, so to say, this is definitely on the lower end of risk meter. We have the phase one, found no evidence of any cause for concern. As John said, there's no evidence of any structures being on the property. Typically, when you find a tank underground, it's because that tank was heating something connecting to some structure, some building that's being used. No evidence that's ever existed here. You could do a phase two here, but you would essentially be, unlike where you have a property where there's a known issue or a known use in historically that may have contamination involved, where you have a specific area you'd want to go in and take a look. You conduct a phase two by going in and drilling borings or by conducting, it's called a GPR. It's like a underground radar sensor. You test the area, see what you could find. Here, because the phase one found nothing, you'd essentially be going in and just digging random holes around the property, seeing what's there, which you could do. Even if you did it, doesn't, if there, let's say that in theory there is something under the ground, even if you're just digging those random holes, drilling in, there's no guarantee you're going to hit it. At the same time, there's no reason to believe there's anything there. So phase two is possible. We spoke with them about it. They believe we could get somebody out in the next week or two to do it. It would require clearing the lot for the day, not allowing anybody to park there. But beyond that, even getting the report itself would take a few weeks. We'd run into contract problems then with terms of the closing date, the date we have to conduct due diligence. Currently, the PSA specifies any due diligence issues. If you want to terminate for due diligence concerns, you have until October 17th. That's 11 days at this point. We'd be moving on a very, very tight timetable to be able to get something back. Possible, but all things considered, I wouldn't call this a high risk or a situation that would inherently call for a phase two.
Questions?
So GZA said that they don't think we need to do a phase two?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. The conclusion to the phase one report is that no phase two is recommended for this property.
We're leaving this as a parking lot.
Well, but we might not, it might not end up being a parking lot at some point in the future.
Understood. But at that point in time, we would do analysis of whatever soil that would be, and that's what we did with the schools, right? We dug, they had to test the soil, some of the soil had to be remediated, some didn't. I mean, you don't know it's going to be there until you start digging, but...
But when we did, when we did Great Island, we did the phase two, which resulted in...
We did, because there had been things there.
Right.
But if we can go back 75 years and there's been no buildings there, we don't know that there's anything there.
Okay.
I would support that this is all risk.
If GZA says we don't need to do it, I'm okay.
Bobby, from my kind of comments and some of the notes we discussed earlier, do you have anything to add? Anything you want to emphasize or clarify?
I couldn't say if anything that I would want to clarify. No causes for concern. I drafted the contract, so I clearly think it's in good shape. But no, I think this is a standard PSA I tried as putting it through, that it should be as commercially standard as possible, the type of deed we're using, the representations we've asked the seller to make about the condition of the property, the contingencies we have in place. Nothing I would consider to be out of the normal course of business in a commercial real estate sale.
One other issue that came up was flooding. That lot has had flooding in the past, and it's over in the corner, that's actually closest to the train station, sort of away from Leroy and away from west, over in that corner, because there's a spot of wetlands that's over there. So we met with Ed Gentile today. Did you go to summarize that conversation?
Yeah. I think the major flooding has occurred during major storms. The design work for the Tilly Drainage Project is underway. That will be completed in about nine months, and then that should alleviate any flooding from major storms. And then in addition, I spoke with our insurance consultant today to see if he had any concerns about a risk from that and any liability the town would be taking on. He views it as very minimal risk, particularly mitigated by the fact that we are doing the drainage study and seeking to address the problem. One of Ed's first things that he would want to do is put up some signs that mark that area and say something, you know, "Don't park here during heavy storms," just so that we're alerting people that the area can't have an issue during heavy rains.
Yeah, before that project gets done?
Yeah.
That's good. So one other issue came up was the prospect of this meeting, the plan of conservation and development. That's a Planning and Zoning Commission purview. But your read of the document, does this pretty clearly fits into that?
Yeah, there's a section in the 2016 POCD that addresses the train stations, and one of the exact recommendations in there is to expand parking at the Darien train station. So this is completely consistent with that and fulfilling that recommendation.
Mike? So just because you mentioned that you're satisfied with the title representations that they're going to make, that there's no, I mean, it's a quitclaim deed, so they changed that?
Limited warranty deed.
Okay, good.
Can you go through the deed and title insurance and just for clarity?
Absolutely. So the PSA specifies that the seller will be conveying title subject to a limited warranty deed. In a general sense, there are three categories of deeds you typically deal with, with real estate. Quitclaim deed, limited warranty deed, full warranty deed. Quitclaim deed, you're essentially saying, I'm giving you what you got. I'm giving you what I got, but I'm not making any representations about it. You take what you get. Limited warranty, the seller is effectively saying, I am conveying my title to you, and I'm representing that I have done nothing to aggregate title. I do not know of anything that aggregates title, and I'm making that representation to you. Full warranty is, I'm representing that I, that there are no issues. Going back to the beginning of time, title is full and clear, marketable, ready to be conveyed to you. Typically, a commercial real estate sale is subject to a limited warranty deed, sort of the middle ground, so to say. Sellers are reluctant to make a full warranty, because then you're representing about things that could have been done decades ago. And more importantly, you as the buyer, you'll have conducted your title search, as we've done here, haven't found any known issues. We've spoken with title counsel at Stewart Title. He agrees there's no issues, and they've represented to us that they are willing to ensure the property based on the title search. So the town will have title insurance policy on the property. And if God forbid there were any issues, you would look to your title insurer as your primary recourse there.
Okay. Last point I have in my notes here is, so just to be clear about what is going to happen after December 31st. So we do intend to migrate this to become a town lot, so I guess you could describe that as medium term, which means that instead of having an attendant there and collecting cash for parking like they do, that we're going to integrate that and have it treated like our other commuter lot. So it's still, we'd be daily parking for now, let the board, let this settle for a bit, and we'll decide if we want to change that in some way. But we're going to have it where you can pay for parking on the app or go to the pay stations that are on the platforms. It'll be just like all of our other daily parking lots. And we're going to rename the lot, I think, subject to your input.
We were thinking Leroy North. It's very exciting.
Yeah. So we got Leroy West, Leroy East, and we're going to have Leroy North. So it was as innocuous as I think we could get. We had about a two-hour meeting about whether to create a shrine to Kip, but we decided not to, even though he's been materially helpful in so many things. I guess the last thing I would say is I very much appreciate the family coming to the town to offer this property for sale. It is a, quite a unique acquisition. It is literally perfectly located for parking, for housing, for everything, and gives us control of a piece of property where we can make the decision that's best for our residents as to what to do with it. And I think economically, it's certainly going to be something that could support the debt and that we have to take on in order to own the property. But I believe that in the long term, it will be very beneficial for us to have this property, and we'll do our absolute best to manage it in such a way that the economics are as optimal as possible. Any final words from you and Bobby are all set?
So long as you're all satisfied, none for me.
Okay. Anything else from everyone?
No, I support the Richard.
Okay. So I kind of blended this in the prior or next agenda item, so let's see here. All right. Thank you. So could I get a motion to approve a resolution of the Board of Selectmen approving the purchase of 37 West Avenue, the issuance of bonds and notes for said purchase? Monica moves? Marcy seconds? All in favor? Okay. And then the bonding resolution?
This actually covers that.
Does that cover that?
Yeah, it's got a final whereas that says you're also approving the attached.
The referral is next.
All right, so we're good on that. I think that's it.
Do we need to do the referral?
That's the next item on the agenda. So we talked about this. This is mandatory for any property acquisition like this, so I don't know if there's any discussion, but if not, could I get a motion to request a mandatory referral from Planning and Zoning for the purchase of 37 West Avenue? Sarah moves? Mike seconds? All in favor? Okay, very good. Next, do we need to have a motion with regard to a public hearing and set up a separate business item? Or is that going to be covered?
We, I think we can add that down in the parking authority business.
All right, I'll wait till we get down there. Thank you. All right. Next item is discuss and take action to accept the ADA transition plan and direct staff to implement. Jennifer?
Excuse me, Jack?
Jack?
Just one thing. We're going to give you a practice round, because F and B meets before the Board of Finance.
Send me the date. I'm happy to come and deliver that presentation.
So whatever information we can get, I'll send it through Jen.
Yeah, let me know. I'll be there. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
And I'm going to send, well, we're going to post all the materials that I've used today.
But there's some additional stuff that when I see it, I might ask, and I'll do it with Jen and Sarah.
For sure. For sure. No problem. Yes?
ADA, last week, you had the presentation on our ADA facility and access audit and the findings from that. Figured we'd give you a little time to digest all of that. But what you have in your packet today is the transition plan that was prepared by the WT group. They mentioned it in the presentation. They've broken it into... They've broken it into three phases, as well as town option and smart practice, and prioritized all of the findings that they found in the areas that they audited. So what action you would be taking now is just to accept the transition plan, acknowledging it exists and accepting it, and then directing staff guided by me to begin implementing it. We would be looking to see how we can incorporate it into the fiscal '27 budget, as well as the six-year capital plan, see if there's any... Some items may be as simple as moving a trash can further back from a doorway, and then we can mark that one as done. One thing that has come up is that we may want to consider engaging the services of a consultant to help us figure out how to implement this, or even engaging on an as-needed basis. One question that's come up is if we put ADA requirements in our bid specs, the expectation is that the engineering firm will design with ADA-compatible design and that whoever the winning bidder is for the construction will construct appropriately. But we don't have anyone on staff that can really review that and confirm that things are being done appropriately. So we think that might be an opportunity to engage a consultant to review plans, come out, make sure that things have been built appropriately, and make sure that we're not spending money building things that we think are ADA-compatible and turn out to not be ADA-compatible. So the exact implementation is still being thought through, but this would at least accept that this is the town's transition plan, and we can begin working on it.
So Jen, this is, again, this is, they had the three phases, but this is the Phase One plus plus?
Well, this lays out Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, and then there was the town option, which would be a good idea, as well as the smart practice. Well, and those two are not yet ADA requirements. I think the town option were ones that maybe could be leading that way. But they would be wise for us to do so, but they are not requirements.
So we're voting tonight to accept this whole plan?
The whole plan.
Including the two extra?
Correct.
And to figure out how to spend three and a half million too?
Over 12 years.
Over a long period of time.
Not all front, but I mean, it's not just the law, it's really the right thing to do.
No, no, I just was, just so that people understand that.
Right, and this is only, obviously, facilities where they could actually measure where we had deficiencies. The other ongoing piece that we have is making sure that our programs, in the traditional sense of like a park and rec program, but also in the sense of public comment.
That's a big piece.
You know, making sure that those are also accessible. We've added an ADA accessibility tool to our website. So we're working on those in conjunction with this.
Big undertaking, thanks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Who is working on all of this?
You.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay. Could I get a motion to accept the ADA Transition Plan and direct staff to implement it? Sarah Moose, Monica Seconds, all in favor? Next up, discuss and take action on the appointment of a selectman to the Pear Tree Point Building Committee. So we authorized that committee at our last meeting, but we have not had a discussion about who on this board would like to serve on that committee. So I am looking for a volunteer.
I'm kind of lean, I'm happy to do it. Yeah, yeah, I'm lean right now with committees that I'm on, so if...
Could I get a motion to approve the appointment?
No discussion.
Thanks, honey. Happy to get paid.
No discussion will be accepted, however, duct tape. I will take a motion for duct tape.
Thank you, Marcy.
Of course, yeah, that's a great project, thank you.
Motion to approve Marcy's appointment to the Pear Tree Point Building Committee. Mike Moose, Sarah Seconds, all in favor? Marcy, thank you.
Sure, of course, I look forward to it.
An usual item here, so number nine, Great Island, discuss and take action to disband the Great Island Building Committee. So the reason we put that in place before was that we had a big project in front of us that had the prospect of multi-millions of dollars in investment. And so now that that's been tabled by the Board of Finance and they are looking for something that is going to be significantly reduced in scope and expense, we're going to need to take some time as a board to figure out exactly what that is. And two of the members of that three-person building committee, because we didn't appoint anyone to it besides Monica, Jeff Table, and Dan Kolokowski, those two individuals really need to be involved in helping us think through what's next. And so having them on a committee means that we can't have discussions without them warning and setting up public meetings and all of that. So oddly, it's a little inefficient to have them as a committee. But the other real reason for disbanding the committee is that, as I said in my presentation on Great Island, the purpose of a building committee, building committee, is to execute a plan and build it. It is not to figure out what to build. And so what I don't want to do is create a committee that's trying to say, all right, now we're the building committee. Now we're going to come up with ideas about what we're supposed to build and recommend that to the Board of Selectmen. That's this board's job. And so by disbanding it now, it allows us to take a step back, take some time to come up with a proper plan response to the Board of Finance, have lots of discussions with others, including the RTM members, to try to get something that everybody's comfortable with and can approve. And once we have that plan, in my judgment, it'll be the right time to reconstitute the Great Island Building Committee. So that's the reason for putting this in here. Questions? Okay. Could I get a motion, please, to disband the Great Island Building Committee? Sarah Moose, Marcy Seconds, all in favor? Okay, great, thank you. Next up, Parking Authority Business, discuss and take action to recommend a daily parking rate for 37 West Avenue.
So in order for the RTM to set that initial rate, which then leads to you having the public hearing and taking action to implement the rate, it is recommended that you make a recommendation to the RTM on what that would be. So if the intention is to keep the lot as is for that initial period when we get it, the recommendation would be a $10 daily rate.
So I'd kind of like to get Board of Finance discussion and input before we start changing the pricing on all this, since it's material to servicing the debt that they'll put on the property. So my recommendation would be that, again, we leave pricing alone for a while, and there's no urgent need to change that. There is the issue of the fact that our other commuter lots are at $5 a day, and this one's at $10 a day. I would point out that we raised daily parking rates by 25% in 2023, from $4 to $5 a day. So I'm personally not in favor of changing those daily rates for some time now. That was a big increase, and I think some of you would echo that. And so I think the question is, what do we do with that $10 rate? Might like to wait, and let's have some discussions about that and figure out how the Board of Finance and these other discussions go. But that would be my recommendation. Sarah?
I agree, but I do think we should have an end date. We should have a decision made by the end of the year. And I also feel that we should be putting in the ability for folks to pay electronically. So many of our commuters right now are paying electronically, and it helps in the morning, particularly if they're commuting.
Agree completely with all that. Other comments?
I think it's perfectly fair to keep the rate at the Darien lot, $10. We're not changing anybody's lives or economic picture based on our acquisition. And we have a responsibility to, you know, to the town and to our finances to certainly not cut that rate, but take a hard look at what makes sense going forward.
I'd support keeping it where it is now.
Through your end, okay. Jennifer, comments?
No, I think it makes sense to leave it where it is. We're going to work on incorporating into the electronic payment. It's just going to take some time, and we won't be able to do that by the time we close on the property, but by January 1st, we'd be doing it.
That would be phenomenal.
Jack?
Yes, since my committee, I think, is the only one who will be handling the rate. So you had mentioned before that, well, it will remain a $10 daily parking rate. Are we going to continue the monthly rates or the weekly rates from acquisition until the end of the year?
So there are 44 contracts in place with commuters right now that have either a monthly or a three-month rate that they negotiated with the owners of that lot. Interestingly, there are two prize winners who won a yearly rate at some charity event, and we'll figure out what to do about that. One thing Kip said that they would not do as of today is they're no longer going to accept monthly or three-month deals for parking. So by the time we get to the end of the year, nearly all of those will be expired, and we'll get back to kind of a daily situation.
Can somebody do me a favor, Jen, and give me a write-up on that so I can bring it to committee? Thank you.
Okay, so this was on the, to recommend a daily parking rate for 37 West Avenue. Do we need to have any separate new business resolution on the public hearing? Or what do we need to do?
I think it would be good if we vote on this one, and then we add new business to discuss the proposed regulation changes that are needed to implement this, as well as setting a public hearing date.
All right, so let's do that. Could I get a motion to recommend a daily parking rate for 37 West Avenue of $10 a day? I don't know if I'd put a timing on that, but we would certainly address that as a board. Let's just leave it at $10, and we'll come back and change that because we'll need to go through a process with the RTM to do it. Okay, Sarah Moose, Monica Seconds, all in favor? Okay. Could I get a motion to go into new business? Monica Moose, Mike Seconds, all in favor? Okay. Jennifer, you want to tell us how you want to articulate the new business we need to discuss?
Yes, I emailed to you, and I put a hard copy at each of your seats. I think there's very minimal changes that are needed to the parking regulations, but what you have is a copy of Appendix C, Article 10, which is all of the parking regulations. There's three changes that I think are needed. On page one, Section 74R1, subsection E, it defines pay station as the way that the town is able to accept daily rates, but because we're going to be keeping the attendant onboard through at least December 31st, we need to cover that transition period. So I'm recommending that we include that the pay station can be manually operated by an attendant, because right now I think it's envelopes, cash and check in an envelope, or payment directly to the attendant. So that would cover the attendant collecting in that lot. On page four, down at the bottom, Section 74R7, in order to charge a daily rate, each of our lots is included in a pay station zone. So we need to incorporate this new lot into one of our pay station zones or create a new pay station zone. Looking at it, I actually found that it was a little unclear which lots were included or not. So I think this is also an opportunity to clarify this. So my recommendation is that we expand the definition of the Darien Station, which used to just read including both northbound and southbound, to say that it includes the northbound and southbound station lots, as well as Leroy West, Leroy North, the new property, Mechanic Street, Squabbling, and Token East lots. That change, as well as all the other ones that are already listed, covers all of the lots in which we collect the daily rate.
So Jen, we can have a different pay scale in the same zone?
You're jumping ahead.
Oh, sorry.
We can't have it in the...
That's page five.
Yep, page five, same section, but subsection D. And this was the advice of council, because I was thinking we would add a whole new section. But they said that we can just change it to say, except for Leroy North, for which the daily rate shall be $10, all other lots will be at $5.
Then we can change this back, or...
Whenever there's a decision, if there's a decision to change it, it'd be the same process, public hearing, notice, and then the change would be...
So reduce it to $5. If we want to equalize it with the other lots, we do the same thing again.
Right.
So we didn't officially name, or should we have something like AKA or something? We never officially named it Leroy North, right?
And I don't know what the process is. I think a lot of them are just like...
I would say as known as Leroy North at this time, or something like that.
Yeah, I was going to say it was fortunate that we decided to call it that.
Or give it the acronym. But you could also say at 37 West Avenue.
Right, you could, yeah, you could identify.
Yeah, because we're not going to have any signs at the time that identify that.
Also known as 37, right.
Yeah, so we can put that in the regulations for now, and then once it's really transitioned over, we have appropriate signage with a name and all that, then we could remove the known as, or... Okay, I will update that. And then these changes are what we will publish as the notice for the public hearing. These are the recommended changes. Because we're working on a tight timeline, and we are targeting October 30th for the public hearing date, we need to publish two weeks in advance. So that'll be before the RTM meets. What we'll put in the paper is some language to the effect of, you know, we're planning to do this, but in the event that it's not approved, the public hearing and any proposed changes would be canceled. Something along those lines.
Okay, so we need a motion... A motion to convey these recommended changes to parking regulations to the RTM and to hold a public hearing to do...
You don't have to convey the regulation changes to the RTM. That is solely for the selectmen, but I think to notice a public hearing indicating the proposed regulation changes.
All right, so we want to vote to change this and to notice the public hearing?
No, you're not voting to change it yet.
We're not voting to change it, it's after the public hearing, sorry. All right, could I get a motion to notice a public hearing for the purpose of discussing parking regulation changes? And that's it, right?
That works.
Mike Moose, Monica Seconds, all in favor? Okay, terrific. All right, now down to the minutes. Approval of the minutes from last week, September 29th, 2025. I read through them, and they looked okay. Anyone have any edits?
I do. I missed the attendance, so I will add that in.
Thank you. Okay, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the September 29th regular meeting as amended? Sarah Moose, Monica Seconds, okay. All right, for agenda review, we still have on my list the update of the left turn lane at Noren Avenue and Ledge Road. I'm working on that, that's coming. Does anyone else have anything to add for agenda review?
I'd like to keep revisiting the conversation about the bikes and scooters around town.
I don't think it's going anywhere in time.
No, it's not. I think it's going to get...
It may abate the over the winter.
Right, that's my point. I think we have a really good opportunity of like six months to talk about it before it revisits again in March, April, when they get busy again.
Well, so the question is just kind of what to do next, recognizing that the Police Commission and the Traffic Authority, they've got a certain role, we've got a certain role, Public Works has got a certain role. There's lots of players at the table. And the question is, is what are some things that we would like to discuss and consider? Right, there's a whole panoply of rules and road markings and signs and trainings and all that stuff that you could considerably consider as your municipality and maybe implement. We have not done a lot of that. We don't have bike lanes in town. We don't have, I mean, really, a lot of ordinances related to all of this. And it's something we could consider. I think bike lanes work in some places because we have wide enough roads, and they simply don't work in other parts of town. And so for that reason, I think that's part of the reason we don't have them. Maybe one of the things to do is, maybe somebody on this board would like to go in, spend a little time with, say, the depot where they're doing training, with the police chief, and try to get a sense for what other towns are doing, and maybe present a list of things that we could start a discussion on and then decide how to implement that maybe, once we discuss things, we kind of like this, to then engage the commission, the police, other groups in town to see if we can get to a consensus as to what we might consider doing differently.
Sounds good.
Would anyone like to pick up that?
Well, I'm in it. I think Kate showed up because I actually had my son take the training class with her, which was great.
Why don't we leave that on agenda review? And as you get some clarity on that, I'm willing to join you and help with that. I'm interested as well. Why don't we spend some time on that and see if we can come up with something to discuss? All right, upcoming meetings, so we've got next, we've got Monday, October 20th. That'll be a Zoom meeting, followed the next morning at 8:30 by the Joint Department Heads Meeting. That will be in person, that's Tuesday, October 21st. And then we will have an in-person meeting on Monday, November 3rd. Anything else for the good of your order? Could I get a motion to adjourn? Mike Moose, Marcy Seconds, all in favor? We stand adjourned, thank you, friends.